And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and in the kingdom of justice for all.
Mr. Ross, could you give a little pitch?
Dear Lord, thank you for another beautiful day in Canton. We pray that you will give us the wisdom during this work session to make decisions that are in the best interest of all the residents. Hopefully, we will weigh the rights and safety of all residents when making our decisions. In your name we pray, amen.
I welcome all our guests and visitors tonight, and we have a special presentation from the Spohia Regional Library System, Ms. Anita Summers. Welcome.
Thank you so much for allowing me time to make this presentation. First of all, I wanted to introduce myself, and I'm Anita Summers, as he said. I have been library director for a couple of months now, and I wanted to introduce myself and also give you a little update on what's going on at the library, and to also thank you for your support, and I will talk about that in a little bit as we go along in the presentation. This is a map of the library systems in Georgia. There are sixty-three public library systems, and we are a three-county system in blue up there, I'm sure you can pick us out, Gilmore, Pickens, and Cherokee Counties. We make seventh in population among the library systems in Georgia. And this is just an up-close of our system, and little stars showing where our branches are located. We have up north, one in Gilmore County, one in Pickens County, and then five, well, really six, in Cherokee County, the Law Library. R.T. Jones is the headquarters of the library system, and we have Ball Brown, Hickory Flat, Woodstock, Rose Creek, and of course, the Law Library here in downtown, and the Justice This is just some highlights of the early history of the libraries in Cherokee County. The first public library was organized in Canton in 1923. Then, the first legally constituted board was appointed by funding agencies in 1956. The regional system was formed with Pickens and Gilmore Counties in 1958, and in 1964, the Woodstock Public Library was founded, and they're going to be celebrating their 50th anniversary on June 8th. Then, of course, all of the rest of our library branches were formed in the 90s, a lot big growth boom, so, yes, yes. And I'm going to give you just a few statistics. This is from our last fiscal year, which ran July 1st, 2012, to June 30th, 2013. So, I would like to come back, you know, after we have this current year that we're in, I'd like to come back and give you an update, but this is what you're looking at now. We had, and this is for Cherokee, I've pulled out, even though obviously we're three counties, we do keep statistics for the whole system, but I'm going to be focusing on Cherokee County in this presentation. There were 600,381 library visits in this county, and you can see how they were spread out among the different branches. 796,374 items were circulated in Cherokee County. And this is how the circulation breaks down into the different types. The red there is our juvenile young adult, so it's our largest portion of our circulation. Then, the light blue is the adult circulation, the print format, and then the dark blue is the non-print format, the audios, videos, and there's a small sliver there in orange that's our magazines, periodicals, and then the purple, the small slivers, electronic formats. That's our fastest-growing segment of our collection, very popular, the eBooks, people can download them for free from our website if they're a registered patron, so. And that's just some eBook statistics showing you how fast it's grown. We just started them in 2011, and as soon as we're able to purchase more, they go fly right out, people download them. And this is some of the services that we have, and out to the side are the statistics of how many usage, how many people use those services or attended. Children's programs, we offer those throughout the year, and especially during the summer, of course, when the kids are out of school, the Summer Reading Club, and all of those other programs that they can attend at the library. We have teen programs, adult programs, group visits, tours, Summer Reading Club, that's the actual number that participated in that. The meetings and study rooms get used a lot, photocopiers, test proctoring, interlibrary loans, that's outside our region where we borrow books for people, items checked out, website visits, PC, internet usage, wireless access, all of our libraries have free wireless access, and that's an estimated number. We are not yet able to count all of our branches, we are going to be able to do that very soon, but we have based that on the libraries that we are able to count right now. And then, reference questions, so that's just some of the biggest basic library services that we count, so. This is our library webpage, and we hope you'll take time to visit it sometime, you can see all of our services on there, and events that are coming up. And on the website, you can also access the downloadable books, audiobooks also, downloadable audiobooks and eBooks. And on our page, you can also access reference and adult services. We have several different databases that you can access from home, some of them you have to set up a password ahead of time or at the library, but a lot of times, you can just use your library card number. And then, we also are part of Galileo, we have access to the state of Georgia's databases that you can access with your library card. A lot of different services that are available, auto repair center, pronunciator, which is a foreign language program, you can learn a foreign language, so a lot of different resources that people may not know about. And this is our Facebook page, if you're on Facebook, we hope you'll visit us and like us, and you can get updates on what's going on at the library. And this is just a selection of some programs for children, some pictures that I had to share with you, that's one of our Summer Reading Club kickoff programs, those are very well-attended. Unfortunately, we often have to turn people away because the room gets full, and we just can't fit anymore in there, you know, with fire marshal regulations and such, but they are very, very popular. Toddler Lap Sit is another popular program where, you know, we wish we had more sessions to offer, because there are more people that want to attend many times than the sessions will allow, so those are very popular for the parents and children. And that's just another set of pictures. Puppet shows, our staff creates puppet shows, usually they have one, at least one in the summertime that they take out to the branches. And that's one thing about, R.T. Jones houses our headquarters of all of our departments, that in the youth department, all of the staff are housed there, and they go out and do the programs out in the other libraries. Reading dogs, this is a partnership with some volunteer organizations who train these therapy dogs to sit and listen to children read, and it's been very successful, the slot's still up, and we've had a lot of stories from parents who say that their children's reading has just really improved, especially those children who are having problems reading, they want to practice at home so they can get ready to read to the dog, so that's been a very, very popular program. This is at the Woodstock Library, they had a Lego club started, and every month, people come, and they had a bunch of Legos donated, and so that people come, and they have a theme, and they put the children, and what's really, the whole family, you know, a lot of times makes Legos creations, and then they put them on display that month, so. We have a lot of holiday programs in our branches, this one is very well-attended, every year, the Polar Express Program, the children come in their pajamas, if they want to, and watch the classic, classic story. And then, that's just some scenes from some other holiday events. And then, you've probably attended or heard about our Festival of Trees, which has been going now probably over twenty years, at least twenty years, I know it's more than twenty years old. At the R.T. Jones Memorial Library, in mid-November through December, the library fills up with all kinds of trees that are decorated by local groups. So, you can not only see pretty trees, you can learn about the different groups who have decorated the trees, because they put information about their organizations. And here's some of the programs for adults. We have a lot of people coming in for job planning, especially in the past few years with the economy being down, and we are a host site, or our parking lot is a host site for regular visits by this mobile unit from the Atlanta Regional Workforce Board. They have, I think, thirteen computer stations inside, and they help people to work on their skills and look for jobs and that kind of thing, so. And then, we obviously help them in the library also, because as you know, most jobs now require a computer to apply online, and people that don't have it have to have someplace to do that, and it's usually the library is where they come. And we do have classes when we have staff available, we'd like to do more, but this is something, we help people with the downloading of their, to their devices of the audiobooks, and then also just general computers classes. Craft programs are very popular, we have a lot of people in our community who have a lot of interesting skills that they're willing to share with others, and so the library is a great place to come and do that. It's interesting, a lot of the topics that people look for books about to learn how to do things, that's the kind of things that they like to see programs about, too, because it's one thing to read about it, and another thing to have somebody demonstrate it for you. And that's just some more of our programs for adults. Educational programs, we have a Summer Reading Club for adults, for years and years, adults would kind of jokingly say, "Gosh, I wish you had a reading program for the adults," and now we do, and it's growing. We have programs for teens, we have a teen advisory board, and that's on the next slide, that the kids, teens apply every year to become a part of this board, and they help plan programs at the library, and they have a newsletter, so it's a great way to get teens involved in the library. Our funding sources, show you how it breaks down, county is seventy-three percent, state seventeen percent, cities three percent, and then other sources, non-governmental seven percent. Our materials, funding, twenty-seven percent from the state, impact fees forty-four percent, and donations twenty-nine percent. This is our, shows our local government funding breakdown for the library, and you can see that that was in 2013. And the figures for the cities down there in the corner, that's actually, I got that from our upcoming budget, so those figures have increased, I know Canton increased from twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand, and we're very appreciative of that. How do we stack up with other library systems around the state? Our local per capita funding is nine dollars and nineteen cents, the state average is twelve dollars and forty-three cents. And that shows, this shows the breakdown by county, and I think that's mainly due to the fact that, you know, when, in 2011, I believe, we had that funding reduction from the county, and I think that's what brought us down there. And that's comparing us to some counties, nearby counties and similar-sized counties in Georgia. We did this calculation, this was something that George Public Library Services came up with a calculation, and we just decided to plug in our numbers and see what happened. They came up with a state average of, for every dollar spent on public libraries, the return is six dollars and fifty-three cents, and when we plugged in our numbers, we came up with eleven dollars and one cent to every dollar, so we feel like we're pretty good value for the money. Our short-term goals, we want to try to restore our staff and hours lost due to the county funding cuts, and we've also had some state funding cuts as well, and we're waiting to see right now what the current budget is going to have for us from the state. We'd like to have more staff for youth programming, because it's so needed, people, we don't want to turn people away, especially children, and we want to form new partnerships with other local agencies to try to combine our resources and be able to offer more to our In the near future, we're going to be doing a long-range plan, which will involve a survey, and we're also going to be, and the state has been giving some matching grants for major repair projects at public libraries, and we are taking advantage of some of that because our buildings are aging, and so we'll be doing some matching grants with local SLOPS money and then the state money to get those projects done. One of them you will see in the near future, is, that's fine, we're going to be repaying the parking lot there at R.T. Jones pretty soon. And this is my name and contact information, and I just want to thank you very much. I think I accidentally deleted my slides about the boards, each county, I mean, each funding agency, each city and then the county have representatives, as you know, on the library board, and Deborah Fincher is the City of Canton's representative, and she's here tonight, and I know you know her, but anyway, I just wanted to thank you for your support, and we are trying to get back to where we were with our hours, I know people were very disappointed when we had to cut hours, and they need us even more when the economy is down, so we appreciate your support, and any time you feel like you can give us more, we'll be glad to do something with it, we have lots of plans. But thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them now, or you can give me a call.
Anyone have any questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Realize they did so much out there. Okay, at this point, I will entertain a motion to consider the approval of the agenda. Mr. Councilor?
Mr. Ross, I'd like to take a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of one item under new business, and it's an informational item about an RFP relative to bond counsel.
That'll be under new business, that'll be aye.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? I would like to add, under the mayor's report, item B, the announcement of a upcoming appointment to the zoning board of appeals, or the various board. Okay, anyone else? All right, with those two changes, additions, we'll have a motion, we approve the agenda. I have a second. Any other discussion? Those in favor, sitting in front of saying aye? Those no, all members voting for motion. All right, we have the minutes in your agenda package there. I have one item that I think needs to be corrected, and that would be, under the mayor's report, number 12A, it mentions Mayor Higginson nominated Dwight Pullin to fill the vacancy on the planning commission. It failed to complete that, said we did vote that night on that, and it was six oh, so she will be changing that, correcting that correction. Any other changes? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as of April 17, 2014. Have the motion in second, those in favor, sitting in front of saying aye? Okay. Financial reports are also in your package there as well, but tonight, we're going to have the discussion and the presentation of our 2013 audit, our comprehensive annual financial report, so James, with Malden and Jenkins is going to make a presentation for us here.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is James Benz, I'm with Malden and Jenkins, and I am the engagement director that worked on this year's 2013 audit for the year ending September 30th, 2013. I believe you should have before you your comprehensive annual financial report, as well as the annual audit agenda, which is what I'll primarily be presenting from this In that, I don't plan to hit every page, but I'll just hit the highlights through there. If you'll flip to page two with me in the annual agenda, just, this gives a little bit of background information on our firm, for those of you who may not be familiar with us. We are a regional firm with three offices in Georgia, as well as Tennessee, Florida, and Alabama. Our firm, our largest niche in our firm is our government practice, it accounts for about twenty-seven percent of what we do, so we do about 250 governments throughout the southeast, with a large majority of those being here in Georgia. On page three, this just gives you a little more information, some of the other services our firm does offer, should the city need any of their services for any reason. On page four, I do want to point out that the financial statements, the preparation of those statements, that is management's responsibility, and as independent auditors, our responsibility is to come in and give an opinion on the presentation of those statements. We were able to give an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which is obviously what you want to have, so we did give that for this year ending September 30th, 2013. There were a few new accounting standards implemented this year, the biggest one, the biggest impact they had for the city was they sort of changed just the language and the name, as well as some of the presentations of some of the tables and pages in the reports, changed things from your statement of net assets to a statement of net position, changed the way you refer to certain deferred incomes, as previously, excuse me, previously referred to as deferred revenue, now are called deferred inflows of resources. But those have all been considered and implemented within the cap for this year. On page six, the city does prepare what I refer to as a cab, it's called the comprehensive annual financial report. It's above and beyond the minimum requirement in the state of Georgia. The city has prepared the basic required financial statements, but then they've also gone ahead and included the introductory section, as well as the statistical section, which is not the norm throughout the state. That puts you in the minority going above and beyond what you're required to do, so I do want to pat the city on the back for that. In the past, you have received the certificate for excellence in financial reporting from GFWA, the National Government Finance and Officers Association. We've submitted the reports for this year to go to them, and we expect to receive those as well again this year. The bottom of page seven, your general fund is obviously your main operating fund, that's where the city runs most of their operations through. Just to point out a few graphs to go along and show you what 2013 looked like. Like most governments, you can look at it, you see 2013, about eighty-five percent of your revenues came from your taxes, and that's your various taxes, whether it be your franchise taxes, your business taxes, or your property taxes. So, that's your main source of income for your general fund. On page eight, just gives you a little kind of a history of how your revenues have performed over the last five years, just to be aware and kind of know where your money is coming from in the general fund. On page nine, your fund balance in the general fund increased this year from about six hundred and seven thousand to about 3.9 million. To point out in there, your general fund's fund balance is comprised of three categories, a non-spendable, which is your prepaid investments items that you can't spend in future years, as well as assignments and unassigned fund balance. Your assignment at September 13th, or September 30th, 2013, was your planned use of fund balance in next year's budget. When you consider that, assigned planned use of reserves with your unassigned reserves, you all had about a thirty-two, your fund balance was about, sorry, 3.1 million, which is about thirty-two percent of your operating expenses expenditures in the general fund. Typically, you like to see a place have about three months of reserves, and you all have about four, so your general fund's looking pretty good this year at the end of September 30th, 2013. So your general fund's looking pretty good this year at the end of September 30, 2013. At the top of page 10, you can kind of see the history of where your general funds come. So to say that it's looking good this year, you guys have done a good job of kind of operating the general fund to get it to where it is now. If you'll flip to page 11, your statement of net position, which is your government-wide consolidation of all your governmental activities. Your net position increased from about 33 million, which I'll say, you'll see there's a typo there. But it increased from about 33 million to 45 million. The primary increase in there is the donation of a large road that the county, with state funding paid and donated to the city, as well as just a general reduction of your long-term debt during the current year. So it accounts for about that $11 million increase. On page 12, going through page 14, is what we like to call the Cliff Notes version of your footnotes. It just gives you a real brief overview of what each footnote in your statements tells you. Here we go to page 15. I do want to point out that we did not have any difficulties this year working with management. As in the past, management does a good job of preparing for the audit as well as providing additional information we request during the process to allow us to get in and issue our opinions. So I do want to thank Mr. Ingram and his staff for that. We did have some audit adjustments, and those have been included in the back of this packet as well as have been included in your financial system and are included in the comprehensive annual financial report. Those have all been discussed with management and again have been posted to your system. On page 17, we did have a few findings as a result from this audit. These items have been discussed with management. They've been considered and implemented. Changes have been implemented where applicable to address these in future audits. Going to page 20, starting on page 20, we just give a brief overview of a lot of the new accounting standards that are coming down in the next couple of years for the city. Some of these will have some impact to the city. Some of them won't have a lot of impact for you all. But there is one that I do want to point out that's kind of been a hot topic for a lot of governments. And that's statement number 68. It deals with the accounting for defined benefit pension plans. With the city being a participant in the GMEB's agent multiple employer pension plan, you guys will have a little bit of a benefit as they have to implement the standard for their year ending June 30, 2014. And you all will have to implement it for your year, September 30, 2015. But what this standard's going to require governments to do is what's previously just been disclosed in the footnotes as a footnote for your unfunded actuarial determined liability is now going to become a liability in two years. And this will be true for all governments. The city's share, if you want to grab, if you want to look in your caper on page 51. For the year ending September 30, 2013, this unfunded actuarial accrued liability was about 2.5 million for the city. And that is the difference in the actual accrued liability less the assets that are held by GMEBs in your name for the plan. This new standard is only going to affect your government-wide statements. It doesn't affect your general fund. And it's not really going to change the funding, your actual contributions that GMEB requires you to make. It's just going to affect the presentation of your financial statements to now report this as a liability, a long-term liability that will be paid over years. I do want to point out your funded ratio for the plan is about 75%, like most GMEBs participants. You're between the 70 and 80%, which is the norm we see for those cities. With that, the last thing I do want to point out is, on page, excuse me, on page 30 of the annual audit agenda, we do offer free continuing education classes for our clients. This includes in-person training seminars, slurs, webcasts. If you all, this includes management as well as the board and the councils. If you all have anyone within the city that'd like to participate in these, my contact as well as our firm contact information is in there. If you could just email us, we'd be happy to have you in those classes. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to address them at this time.
Anyone have a question? I certainly think we need to compliment Nathan and his staff for the great job that they've been doing and continue to do. So we'd like to thank them. No other questions?
Can you raise one?
Street did we get?
Probably 20 to 140. About 21, probably about a shopping center there. Thank you, James. Appreciate you very much. The financial statements for March are included in your package as well there. So that is for informational purposes. If you have any questions on those, I'm sure we have someone that can answer those. If not, then we will go with our 10-minute public input period. And we have one person signed up, John Fincher. Oh, you did? Okay, okay. I'll just put your name on there.
I think everybody here knows me pretty well. I'm John Fincher. I live at 155th Ave, Corso Road. I've got a question for everybody. Are you Canton connected yet? I don't know whether the video camera picks this thing up or not. Are you Canton connected? I've had a lot of fun working with the new committee that's formed, the Canton Connected Committee. We're working to try to increase communication between the residents and the council and mayor about different things throughout the city. You can get to a place where you can get more Canton connected by going to our website, www.canton-georgia.com. When you bring that up, don't go to the one that says G-O-V. Go to the one on your computer that says H-O-N-E. Then you can find all kinds of good things. I wanted to tell the members of the council and the residents and our citizens that are here and at home that we have been reviewing the fascinating information on our city website that I personally did not know existed. And I feel many of our other residents, and maybe some of the council members, do not realize exists. Surprising. There's useful items on the website like See Click Fix, where non-emergency issues like potholes or busted curbs or street lights being out can be reported. And actually, they can be reported from everyone's cellphone using a cellphone application that was created for our city. Useful items like a map showing where localized oil-water advisories are in effect. And we even got a Code Red application on here that gives us a Code Red alert of different things that may happen in our community. Now, you may know that. I don't know. I didn't know it before I got involved in it. But these items are much more available on our website. So all Canton residents can see the things on our website to better understand our government and utilize the services of our city. If you are watching videos tonight, Canton, be sure to find the icon on our website that says See Click Fix, like the one I'm holding. Going to be holding. Now, See Click Fix. It's on our website. If you haven't been there, you need to go and look it up and see what all you can do with it. You'd be amazed if you done it. Now, Camille Waze, our Canton IT manager, I think is going to be here tonight, to tell us more about what can be done with the website. The information that Camille will present tonight is available to all our Canton residents and Canton concerned people via our website. When you search this website, be sure to pick the one that says Home, H-O-N-E. As a member of our committee, I am pleased with the work of Camille and her staff and feel the City of Canton residents are blessed to have such truly dedicated employees. After tonight, Camille is going to create a computer tutorial on the various things that people will be able to learn by using information on the website. The Canton Connected Committee has been formed. It's going to be an ongoing project committee wanting to provide more and more information for Canton residents and Canton concerned people and to advertise to folks how to get connected. Along with encouraging residents to learn how to use the parts available on the website, we will be attempting to create new and possibly more convenient ways for citizens and residents of Canton and interested people in our community to communicate their thoughts and wishes to you, the council and mayor. The purpose of our committee is non-political. We just want to help to create and encourage new ways of communication. Thank you very much.
My name's Carol Day, and I live in the hills at Ridgestone. And this is something that had been brought to my attention. And because of the change in the weather and things as we're approaching summer, I wanted to bring to your attention something that the City of Acworth is doing. They are doing a mosquito spraying for the season for 2012, 2014. Boy, and it will begin April 21st and continue until the end of warm weather approximately September 1. The spraying will start on a, it gives you the locations in that city where it will start and where it will conclude. And the material data safety sheet, the MSDA, for the product used to eradicate mosquitoes can be viewed by clicking on a site on your computer. I've got a packet here that shows that, and I will give this to you. I know that this is a little late for this season to think about. But this is an ongoing issue within the community and communities around because the mosquito hazard can be a problem and it can be a health issue. So I thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Camille. Okay, that's all we have with the public input period. Under old business demonstration of the city website capabilities, council member of the group.
I'd like to invite Ms. Waze, she's director of IT, to give a brief presentation.
Good evening, everybody. I think Mr. Fincher did a great job. Thank you. Very good. I'm going to kind of, I'm not going to do the website demonstration, but I am going to tell you guys what's out there. We've had a lot of tools out there for several years now. We've had See Click Fix there for about, going on five, six years now. We were one of the early initiators in this area to do it. So we have probably close to 200 residents that are currently using it now. It's a great tool. We've had a lot of success with it. Our mobile application we've had for about two years now. We have about 560 people using our mobile application. Obviously, social media, our Code Red, Nixle, and we also have our citizen engagement forum. All of this information is getting passed out to residents in a resident package. Whenever anybody comes in, they'll get a new resident package. And it describes the services that are offered to them, where they can find the information, important contacts, et cetera, et cetera. The one thing that I would like to describe and go over is what is citizen engagement. Citizen engagement is not just how they do it electronically, it's also how they do it face-to-face. Art events, council meetings, public speaking. Anytime that you're in an arena and you're speaking to somebody about your city, we should be promoting our city, telling them the ways that they can contribute to us, how they can comment on issues, how they can get in touch with us or you. The benefit of citizen engagement, you're drawing great knowledge from local resources that'll help us make decisions on problems we're facing. So I encourage all of you guys to get involved in it and spread the word.
Can you tell us what Nixle is, please?
Nixle is a community messaging system. We use Nixle in correlation with Code Red. Nixle is not necessarily used for emergencies. It's used for community messaging. If we have a road closure, there's a detour in effect, reading cancellations, oil-water advisories, the lifting of oil-water advisories, items like that. Residents can sign up for this for free as well. You get the texts, you get the emails, and you also get the web messaging. So that's completely available. And all of those messages do publish directly to our social media sites as well.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Very good. Okay, item B, discussion of the zoning ordinance amendment, section 8-8-C-62.05, Central Business District, General Commercial, and amending Appendix A zoning use chart by adding a new conditional use of automotive paint and body shop. Mr. Councilor?
I believe this is the second reading, isn't it?
Yeah, I believe it is the second reading of that.
So we'll probably have a motion to vote on it at the voting session.
We'll go on it at the voting session, yeah. Does anyone have any questions about that? That's been kind of an ongoing thing, and we had to redo it, as you know. Go through it again, so re-adaptize, I think. All right, that will come up at our May 15 meeting for both. Item C, discussion of Paul Park management. Mr. Councilor?
Yes, on Paul Park, we've had a lease where it's been managed by an individual who has become ill and wants the city to take over the maintenance of the park. The last time we discussed this, the charge was to get an approximate cost. And the cost for the city, it's around $5,500 a year. Although we do figure the labor cost in that. Jovi West, the Parks and Rec and Public Works Director. We're going to talk about absorbing the labor into our current staff. So the actual cost would be around $2,500 for equipment and materials. The lease is really in the middle of the lease, but I imagine we could cancel the lease to benefit this woman if both parties were in agreement. So that would be probably, she did send an email and said she's still ill and couldn't even attend tonight. So I would think that we'd make a motion at the next meeting to, based on her request to cancel the lease and let the city assume the responsibility for the maintenance of that park.
Anyone have a question, comments, discuss?
Do we have any potential liability or risk as a city? You may have answered that question earlier, I definitely should. But if some dog bites a kid or kills another dog or whatever in the park, it's our fault.
No, I don't think we could have any liability for the animals. Our liability would be like any park, just the condition of the park.
So if something, somebody gets hurt there, you don't have liability?
No more than anywhere else, Mark.
No more than that.
Not because of the dog.
Not because of the dog. They slip and fall in the park, I think we have to vote.
Yeah, I'm not, I think we probably, this is an area of open space there that we had been prior to our arrangement with the Paul Park folks. We'd been maintaining it anyway. You know, we'd been cutting the grass ever so often, maintaining it anyway. But when they came in, they paid for and put up like the fencing. And we actually helped them by putting in like a water meter and running a little water out there for the animals as well. So basically, compared to what we used to do, it's not going to be that much more, you know. But it is going to take, it is going to take some effort there to keep the grass cut now. And I just wonder if we need someone And I just, I just wonder if we need someone that, I just, I would like to think that we could get someone with the Humane Society or other organization that might be willing to sort of take this on. It's really what I'd like to see, because I feel like it's important to have somebody kind of responsible for what's, what's going on there and the animals coming and going and so forth, even though I guess it's, you know, you can take your dog there and close the gate and let the dog run, I guess, you know. So, I think that's the idea of it. But someone sort of needs to be overseen, I think. And maybe we'll try to see if we can get, get in contact with some people that might have an idea, who might wanna take this on since this young lady who's been in charge can no longer deal with it, so. Anyway, any other comments?
I had, I had one other comment. We had talked, it's not on the agenda, but it's a related item. We had talked about becoming more of a dog-friendly community by allowing pets in our parks. And it kind of never got on the agenda, but has anybody had any feedback from the residents, positive or negative, about whether that's a good idea?
Well, I, I had at least one or two asking about that, because you know, it's kind of interesting, we, I guess we have that as an ordinance prohibiting dogs in the parks, but yet certain events like Festival of the Arts in May, I mean, you see a lot of dogs come through on leashes, the leashes. And I've never seen any real, real problems occur when those are passing through, and I've been at almost every hour of every round. Now, you know, there may be, it may be a different animal down at Heritage and so forth. It may be that we wanna at least look at it to whether we wanna open it citywide, restrict it to certain parks, or, or just leave it like it is, one way or the other. But, you know, I think we should be, probably we'll pay it friendly and everything, and if we could, if we could, maybe we have to do something on trial basis and see what happens, you know. And then if it turns out that we have complaints or mishaps or dog bites or whatever, you know, we would then, you know, we could always change our course of correction. Mr. Cummings?
Yes, one of the things that I might mention, if, even today, if there's someone in the park with a dog on a leash, if they say this is a service dog, we have no way to stop that. So, wherever a service, and we don't really have any way to question whether or not that is a service dog. So, it might be a good idea to look at and explore just allowing it under certain defined rules on leashes, of course. I don't know, but.
Mr. Cummings?
Now, we're gonna have an additional park, which is rather large, set up for walking, which is right across the river from the park that we already have in Heritage. It's that, one of those parks probably could be made to be more dog-friendly. And then the citizens have a choice between they wanna walk in. If they don't wanna walk where the dogs are, they can, they got plenty of walking space. And then you, we got public as well. So, the people who have dogs, they can go to one park. The people who don't care for it, go to the other.
I think that's a good thought. Mr. Cummings? If we do, I think we're probably almost obligated to put sort of, some sort of a waste disposal.
Uh, yeah.
I think they cost about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars each, and a big part of it, you know, need more than one.
You mean to dispense the bags or what?
Dispense the bags and contain the waste, yeah. So, we gotta think about that, too, as a small cost. And then somebody's gotta pick it up, you know.
Yeah, well, we, we, I think we ought to have strong penalties for those that didn't, if, you know, if I had a catch.
It's difficult to enforce. You gotta have the honor system.
Yeah, I'm checked.
That was the biggest complaint in the past, when they had the, going for it, was even by cleaning up behind them. And I think that's what led the doors were not opened. And those are people that, that were.
Maybe, that's something to be told about. Probably, maybe at the next meeting or in the, in the next few weeks, we'll put together a committee, let somebody look at it, make a recommendation.
Maybe Mr. Cummings could look into what the requirements might be for your Joby and his crew to take care of it, because it's gonna end up on his job last.
The requirements, what?
For, for picking up the waste and how we would enforce it or whatever. I mean, it's, it's not a simple thing. You almost, if you're gonna have pets, you're almost gonna have to have one of the multiple numbers.
Sure.
Doesn't work.
Okay, anyone else? All right. The next item, item D, update discussion of council chambers construction, Mr. Cummings?
Yes, two weeks ago, this is, when just sort of delay, delay, delay on the chambers. So, two weeks ago, I formed a team of Camille, Joby, I'm sorry, Camille, Mark Crosby, Roger Bailey's about, Teresa, Donna, and we took the bull by the horns, and we went in there and we made complete punch lists. And you probably saw a lot of activity going on. We're getting the chambers ready. Our intent is to open it for the court date on the fourteenth of this month. It'll probably be the first use. I was hoping that we would, or I thought at first we could use it for the council meeting on the fifteenth. I made the decision not to do that because we have an all-new voting system, and I thought we, we're starting with a work session where, as we're learning the whole new mechanics. So, the first council meeting will be the work session of June, that's now scheduled. We're gonna go through training. All the members here will be trained, as well as Susan, Camille. And we'll hope to be meeting, with these sessions starting in June in there. And that's the basic update.
Good, thank you. Item E, discussion and action on additions to the May tenth city auction list.
I know we don't usually ask for action on items. There are two items that were not included in the auction item list. One is the sweeper, the small sweeper that we used primarily in the downtown area. That had been originally on the list, and I questioned why we had it on the list with a minimum of five thousand dollars. And they said, well, we haven't used it for four years. And they report, it was reported to be in good condition at the time, so I yanked it from the list. As we now pulled it out to start using, it needs eleven thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars worth of work, so it's not in good condition. I'd like to add it to the list if I can get a motion so to do it. The other is the mower that we replaced one or two sessions ago, the John Deere mower. The only advantage of putting it, the auction, I believe, is May tenth. If we don't add it tonight, these two items, we'd hold and just keep around for another year until we did it next year. So, if I could get a motion and a vote on that, I'd like to do that.
Send a motion to the, that's second. Motion is second. Any other discussion of questions? If not, there's a favor, see if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Oh, no, all members have a motion. Item F, discussion of the wastewater treatment plant design, quality assurance, quality control results, and Buy American Steel men, steel mandate.
Okay, if we go back to the last session, we had to, we voted for a change over and, a change order on the waste treatment plant because of the Buy American provision for three-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, and this was because there had been a delay caused in the dating of the approval. And the original EPA mandate was anything not approved prior to the January seventeenth, would be required to use Buy American Steel. Well, the good news is that there's been a change in the EPA ruling, and now any plans that were submitted but not necessarily approved prior to January seventeenth will be grandfathered. That means we do not need that three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, and I will be making a motion next meeting to cancel that change order. There was also a recommendation at the same time which passed, a motion passed, to increase the loan request by four-hundred thousand. I'm not sure what the recommendation will be yet. We have some question about a piece of land that, I guess it goes back seven years, two-point-three acres that was traded to us from the state, relative to the armory there, in exchange for us paving one-point-seven acres and constructing a new access road that would, this two-point-three acres encompasses. So, we're gonna look at those costs, and I made a request that we keep the loan because these two-point-three acres are invaluable relative to the future expansion and possibly the present expansion of that plan. So, that'll also be on the agenda next time. I have received a draft of the QAQC report that PSI did relative to the design. It is a draft, so I haven't distributed it. When I get the, the final report, it's not a draft copy. The basic nutshell of this is that their opinion is, and I'm paraphrasing because I'm not using their exact language, but the complexity and cost of future expansion is an issue. The way they have designed the plan, or the way, their opinion, the way the plan is designed, that future expansions will be extremely complex, and the cost of it would be more than possibly necessary. Specific design issues that they came up with were, there's a retaining wall in the design that will initiate, will immediately need to have a change order because it's put on top of electrical duct bank. It's actually placed over an electrical duct bank. There's also a question on the removal of a basin wall that currently is reinforced or structurally reinforced, and it's designed to be removed, and they question whether or not that's gonna be a possible thing to do in removing that. There's a temporary method plan where they shut down, we have three basins, as I understand it. And when they shut down while they're doing the renovation of the plant, they have to go in, they have to change the flow into, and I'm not an engineer, I'm trying to get it in layman's terms, they have to change the flow into an EQ basin on a temporary basis while they address the modernization of a regular basin. This EQ basin is undersized for what they estimate the flow to be coming into it, and therefore, we could have overflow on a temporary. Now, I'm remind, remember, this is not a permanent, but while we're making the changes, it would be a temporary use, as they see it as too small. The headworks of the plant, of the, of the plant is extremely complex and does not meet certain manufacturers' requirements relative to screen access. All screen access is supposed to be accessible. And in one act, one side of the screen, there's a twenty-foot drop, so it's not easily accessible. But those are just a summary of it. And I hope they have the complete draft and maybe some recommendations at the next meeting.
Have these been shared with the design engineer?
No, because I haven't got the final copy.
Well, it certainly should be.
They should be, and I, I think they should be, and I think they will be, but I don't wanna send a copy that says draft on it, I want the final copy.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Next item, item G, discussion of Bluff's property common area, Mr. Cummings?
Yes, as we all know, this has been an issue that we have had here. And, Mr. Merritt, the two points that you had brought up were point one, that, that we were binding future councils, and point two, the carryover of debt, or the incurring a debt over the end of an annual period. And I gave a lot of thought about this, and I thought, well, we paid some of these closing fees, or some of these association fees at closing. So, we've already done it, and we're here discussing the next payment. I think if we were to address this as a council decision to be made on an annual basis relative to a single invoice for services provided or to be provided, that we could overcome both of those legal ramifications. So, at the next meeting, I'll probably propose that we address the singular invoice, treat it as an annual invoice for services that are, have been performed and are to be performed the rest of this year, and let the council decide from that point.
Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
Two items, item A, Mr. Cummings, did we, did we pay last year?
From what I understand, yes, that we only have this year's available, or due, I'm sorry. It may have been in the closing.
We didn't, in the city, we didn't actually pay very much of that, because it, whatever was due at the time of closing.
Fifty-three hundred dollars.
Some of that was on the property of the four, I think.
And, and the, the second comment, as you know, the last, last meeting, I was somewhat disturbed that we couldn't do some of these things. So, I took the liberty to go and check for myself. And the city were presently, it's got, I've got a list, I've got it here on my phone. I need to bring a printed list of about twenty said type of arrangements that we have with other vendors that would resemble exactly what we're doing or suggested doing here with this surface. And we're more than happy to share that with you, but this city is presently doing business that way. Whether it's against the law, I don't know, but we're doing business that way. So, maybe we should go back and revisit all twenty of these arrangements that we are presently working on.
That's a good point. Anyone else? Okay. Under New Business, item ten A, as you know, the Georgia Legislature passed House Bill sixty this past session, been signed by the governor, and it takes effect on July the first, I believe. I thought it would be appropriate to learn from our city attorney what impacts this law could have on our, our cities, perhaps finances or otherwise. But it, it is definitely gonna have an impact as far as what we may or may not need to do. So, I'd like to ask Bobby Dyar to, if he would, kinda give us a synopsis of the bill and what we can or cannot do.
I will. The, it's a lengthy bill, as, as you see, and it's a broad scope of what it would change. But the particular thing that's affecting cities is government buildings. Before I could tell you what changed, I'll tell you what the law is now, until July first. Right now, it is a crime to carry a weapon, that's a gun or a knife, into a government building or a courthouse. What, that will still be a crime in a courthouse. It'll still be a crime in a government building, except, and that's what was added, was an exception. The exception is that if the government building is, does not have a, what it says, and if it's not restricted or screened by security personnel, meaning if you let anybody in and you're not checking for weapons or restricting it in some other way, then it will not be a crime to carry a weapon into those government buildings. So, for your purposes, I mean, we have municipal functions, so we're, to a sort, to a certain extent, it, it's a courthouse, and so I'll have to work through that, see how that works out. But court, whether you're screening or not, they can't bring a weapon in. If this is deemed to be a courthouse, because we have court functions in here, we wouldn't have to screen, and weapons would still be prohibited. If you wanted to prohibit it in a city, city council meeting, we would have to do something different than we do now. And it's really a manpower issue, because if you want it to continue to be to continue to be a crime, if you are providing the screening or restriction and you want it to be a, a crime, one of those people has to be a certified law enforcement officer, a peace officer. So, you can't just have a person back there. You can, but if they come past you with their weapon, it's not a crime. So, it would have to be an officer there. So, you're talking about working up some kind of security plan if you wanted to restrict weapons, for instance, in a city council meeting. Now, when you move over to the courtroom, the new meeting room, it might have been a metal detector, and so that would take care of that, but you have to have somebody manning the metal detector. You can't just have it go off, somebody's gotta be there. And so, the, the cost function is mostly personnel of achieving what you need to achieve under the law. So, there's a lot, as always with the new law, and this is a very comprehensive law, there's a lot of questions that we lawyers start looking at, say, what does that mean? And what does that mean? And what does that mean? And so, some of that's gonna go on for a while as we figure out what some of these definitions mean. But that's basically the big change. The other things, like having weapons in parking lots, none of that changed, they cannot restrict that. They did add a provision that local governments aren't, really aren't allowed to regulate weapon guns at all, and if you violate that, you can get sued. So, we won't be doing anything to regulate weapons. That's pretty much it. It sounded a bigger deal, but it's really about providing screening or restrictions to keep, if you want to keep weapons out of city hall or if you wanna keep weapons out of city council meetings. I, last couple times I've been over to city hall, I noticed that they're now locking the doors beyond the lobby area. So, that would be a restriction, so you could prohibit weapons beyond those locked doors without having to provide screening. So, the lobby area would be the issue.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes, I also read this and I'd like to ask Mr. Dyer to further investigate this, but it restricts any building that is occupied by a judicial court, including municipal courts. Now, to my interpretation of the law, and again, I'm not a lawyer, but this building contains a municipal court, we are conducting judicial businesses every single day by the collection of fines, so we have a judicial window in that court, and my interpretation is that this building then could be defined and excluded as being under that municipal court, and I'd like you to research that if you would, please.
Would you, would you read again the definition of court, courthouse?
And that, and that did not change it, but the definition is it means a building occupied by judicial courts and containing rooms in which judicial proceedings are held. So, there are a lot of questions with what Mr. Cummins is suggesting, and I don't really know the answer, sitting here obviously, but, and, and there'll be questions about whether if you don't have judicial functions going on, is it a courthouse? And does, is it going on just the courtroom to the whole building? Those are all, when I said, those are questions, those are questions. So, when, when you could just say we're a judicial, a government building and it was the same as courthouse, we'd have to answer those questions, but now that there's a distinction, we will.
Well, I mean, the first thing left is, you know, what, if we do nothing, what happens?
If we do, if we do nothing.
Weapons can be brought in?
Or not. I mean, if we decide, if we decide it's a courthouse, then, then they're not, and we find out. But if, if weapons would be brought into the building, except for when court's going on and in the courtroom, and then they, in the city council meeting, you would have weapons permitted. By, by licensed holders, it's still a crime for a non-licensed holder to bring any weapon into a government building.
What's the procedure to get clarification on what it is or is it, do you go to Attorney General, you gotta go back to the legislation?
Or somebody sues you and you find out in court.
But we don't wanna wait to get sued if we have.
That's, well, sometimes that's the only way you know, is courts have to start answering the questions. We need opinions all we want, but eventually a court decides.
Well, would that reduce our liability if Attorney General says this is his interpretation of it?
Yes.
I guess, I guess the first thing we decide is, and this is obviously a council decision here, is do we wish to restrict the guns in the city hall and in the city council meetings? I mean, that's a decision this body's gonna have to make.
Because if you, if you decide you don't wanna restrict it, it doesn't matter about our definition.
Well, we could like screen.
Or restrictions of some kind, but there's a.
We may have to do nothing, we may have to do nothing, actually.
Cause it's a courthouse.
Yeah, cause it's courthouse.
And, and the question I have is what is restricted mean? At what level of screening do you have to have if you're restricting it in some other fashions? There's a lot of questions there, but yeah, the threshold question is, do you want to do anything about it or not?
Well, it doesn't take place till first of July.
Right.
So, if we did a temporary screening until we have more clarification of what we can attend to, or how they judge this building, whether it is or is not, we can always remove the, the additional manpower if, so if we so choose to do so, but we can go with the way it is and just have the restriction, have the screeners there.
We have, we have a metal detector.
But I'd put the metal detector not at the front door going into the street, have them coming into the.
That's, that's where it is now, you know.
Yeah, but.
Right.
But you close off the street so that people can't just, you'd have to have two people.
It'll take two, it'll take two, the way you do it, cause if, if the metal detector goes off, somebody's gonna have to check that person, you know, and somebody else is, you don't wanna hold a whole line up to keep people from coming in while somebody's over here doing this, so somebody else, cause if people can walk through the metal detector and it doesn't go off, you know, they can come over through freely, you know. So, I agree, I think it's gonna take a bit of. Mr. Grant?
We currently have one, correct?
Right now, we have one, yes.
And a good look at that.
Mr. Russ? Could we legally have a screening device and if a person had, and we had to allow guns into, into our chamber, could we make note of the fact that they, or just, the first time the person came through, they would have to identify them as a licensed holder, we, we would have a way of checking. Till we get the check done for that person, they're gonna be prohibited.
The law also prohibits you asking whether somebody's a licensed holder.
Yeah.
You don't allow, you don't allow that, not allow that. It's not a good thing.
I think you can, if you screen, the way I read it, if you screen and someone fails to pass through, you can refuse them admittance, but you can do no checking whether or not they're legally licensed. You can only, you can ask them to leave, that's the extent of.
Or, or to remove the weapon.
Or remove the weapon.
That's if we determine we can do that.
I think, I think.
If you're screening.
If you're screening.
If you're screening, you can do it.
And if screening could be the wand, you don't even have to have the metal detector, you could just have a wand, which would, which might require some pat-down, which you got problems there.
Yeah, that's not bad.
But you're gonna have somebody.
Then you're gonna have to have a man and a woman.
Right, but it, or you have to, you know, that's going off, what's in your pocket, and they can pull it out, but I think that would be screening.
And if they refuse to tell you, then they, you could ask them to leave, correct?
Yes, it's, basically what it says is if a licensed holder carrying the weapon attempts to enter a government building that is restricted or screened by security, they must first be given the opportunity to exit or leave before any further action can be taken. So, if we're screening, the way I reiterate that, if we're screening the building and we're restricting it, our course of action is to ask them to leave and not allow entry.
But, and that's, that's as opposed to arresting them for trying to bring a weapon in. I was just making it clear that attempting to is not a crime.
That's why they can turn around and walk out.
Correct.
But what, what do they define a, a knife to be? At what point does a penknife become a weapon?
It's a, it's by length of blade.
Is it five inches of the blade?
I can't remember.
I think it's five inches.
It's, it's defined by the length.
But the blade itself, not the handle of blade at all.
I believe that's right.
Okay, is there any other, are there any other comments? Is there anyone who just wants to do nothing?
She's just scratching her head.
But don't you think we don't, we don't have to make a.
Oh, no, I'm, we're not making a decision, I was just kinda getting an idea of how, how we wanna proceed here, you know, if, or if we wanna proceed to, to be planning ahead, and I think, Jack, go ahead.
Six years, maybe we just been courting. We've always had enough.
Well, I, I, you know, I wouldn't anticipate any problem necessarily, I think that, of course, it's been a violation of the law before.
It's, it's really illegal for somebody to bring a weapon in now.
Yeah.
Maybe Mark needs a bigger gun.
What's that?
Maybe Mark needs a bigger gun. I mean, you know, if we, if we only stay with one, you know, you've got potentially multiple targets out there.
Yeah.
Russ, I hear some, maybe that we all think about it and.
Yeah.
Put it on the agenda as a possible action item and if we take no action, we take no action.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have, we're gonna have to discuss this further, there's no doubt about it, because it is gonna have an effect on how we do business here, and we're gonna have to take whatever steps are necessary to, assuming, assuming that this board wants to take those steps and go through a screening process.
If public conduct or a weapon entered the building, does that sort of choose, well, employees being able to carry their weapons and with them on their jobs?
Probably, but, but here's, that's a, that's something I thought about, with, with you restricting access to certain areas, and if employees are allowed to have weapons then in that restricted area, you don't have to allow other people to bring those weapons into that restricted, I think it's all or nothing.
Couldn't we, I think employee conduct is determined by personnel policy, so you could establish policies relative to employees, could you not?
Yeah, but, yes, I mean.
I mean, you can establish dress code, you can establish all these other policies, you know, but then this is all under a personnel policy, I don't.
We got, we got another to make it just even more complex. If it's Winston, they're holding court in there, someone comes in here, he wants to go pay his water bill, they use a kind of license to carry, he's gonna go downstairs. Don't we let him in?
Well, that comes a question of whether are you defined this building? We also have on the lobby, we have a municipal court is also in session at the glass cage because we're collecting fines, so, you know, you're in a, you know, I think we need to think it out and.
But it, it concerns, it concerns me that, you know, in, in an arena where there are many times angry people showing up because of something either this council did or a zoning board perhaps is turning someone down or, or not getting what they want or, you know, there's a lot of, of anxiety that exists. A lot of people don't show up for a meeting, as you well know, until they're really angry or not upset about something. And to me, I just wonder is that, is that the time for them to be armed at that time, you know, really? I think I know my answer, but.
Glenn, Glenn, you brought up a good point, because couldn't you actually consider part of the court payment of the fine, which is in the.
I think that's what you were saying.
The building gets extended beyond just council chambers, no, I don't think you can stop that.
The court is in, in essence, part of the court is in the lobby.
In the lobby, you come into, you come into the lobby, you really have access to all the building unless those doors are locked. I mean, you've got, you got access to downstairs, you got access.
You got access to court employees. Yes. Working.
If you, if you consider that a judicial proceeding.
Which I would.
Then, then the entire building is restricted, I mean, you, you, then it's a courthouse.
I would consider that a, would you say collection of fines is a judicial proceeding?
I think that's certainly an argument to be made.
You can't get out of here unless you pay the fine. I mean, you gotta, you gotta pay the fine, you gotta come in that part of the building. They don't collect the fines in the chamber.
Right, that's correct. Anyone else?
Might have a good argument there.
Okay, well, we will, we will look to put this on our next agenda for further discussion, possible action, but if, if any actions needed, what I'm hearing now is that there may not need to be any particular action to, to implement what we're gonna do other than just do, you know, as far as the screening goes with the metal detector and so forth. And we just set that as a, you know, a matter of procedure there when they come through into that little room there, they're coming from the outside through the metal detector and on in, so. Okay, next item. Introduction and discussion of proposed city safety policy, Mr. Peters?
Yes, we had a committee that developed a safety policy, which is in your packet, and I will be making a motion at the next meeting to adopt that safety policy.
Okay. Would you, at, at that time, or, or can you tell us basically what the changes may be from the existing safety policy?
Yeah, I can't tell you the difference.
Maybe the next meeting.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay, that'd be fine.
One question, Mr. Mayor. Just one question, the, the city safer, safety coordinator, is that a new position, a new?
Oh, it's.
It's unconfirmed.
It's like we have the event coordinator in Main Street.
Appointed, existing staff.
Yes, an existing staff, it's no new staff.
Be one of the department heads or something, most likely. Okay.
I think you.
Next item, discussion award and, discussion regarding the award and execution of contract with allied paving contractors for the two twenty-fourteen Amig Street repair. This looks like this is about one, approximately one mile of paving and the bid was two thirty-eight in that range.
Four fifty, two thirty-eight, four fifty was a little bit, and we're just bringing it on and there's a discussion at the main street, and that'll be on the next agenda for awarding of that to the lowest bidder.
What is that scheduled?
This, I think this summer.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, item D, discussion of city employee YMCA membership, Mr. Cummins?
Yeah, the YMCA has offered us a discount program for the employees. I've been talking with Mr. Hex relative to the contract. They put one in your, yes, they did, they put attachment sound, there'll be a few changes that are going back to the Y, for example, where there's a waiver on the, it's not clear in here on the, the initiation or the membership joining fees, they will be waived for employees. Another change to the contract is on fee, which I wrote in, they asked for putting a page on our intranet, which does not exist in the city, so the change, and again, Bobby will be working, and I'll be asking for Mr. Dyer to work out this language, so that there's no implied responsibility on our part to develop an intranet, which meets amongst the employees, so the line should read, should city, a camp or COC develop an intranet, COC agrees too, but that's only if we develop it to have their page. The contract will be for one year, automatically renewed without a termination instead of two years in there. The other thing is it refers to appendix A in here, there is no appendix A, so we will be removing that language. Other than that, we'll go for offering this to our employees at the next meeting, hopefully we'll have a contract that is ready to be voted on. Hopefully we'll have a contract that is ready to be voted on and approved by the council.
Oh, uh, one, one question there. And, and, once again, it says the YMCA reserves the right to make rate increases, uh, and the increases will be added to the existing reduced rates, and assess additional joining fees and so forth. Which, would, would that, is that gonna remain assessed additional joining fees? That's gonna now.
That, well, I don't, it's, they're gonna be waived, there's part there about the initial fees or initiation.
Joining fees, yes.
Joining fees, sorry, wrong term. Uh, joining fees, and in talking to Mr. Hix, he says we're gonna waive all of that, so I don't have the final language to answer your question, but I would say yes, that, that is...
Could you also include in that, that, uh, prior to increasing their rates, that they would notify the city, uh, maybe sixty days or something like that ahead of that? So the employees could be notified that the rates were going up?
Okay, that's no problem.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Russ?
You know, they have a program that's very similar to this right now for, it's like, uh, a friend's join it, you get twenty percent off, comes the exact same number, but here's one thing that's gotta be clarified. When you drop, you get waived as a Canton resident, you don't pay an initiation fee now, which is identical to this. However, if you drop the membership, you come back, they charge you a fee. I think it's like the nominal fee, but it should be clarified that they are in fact going to charge that fee, or are not going to charge that fee and what that fee is. Because I think that's a little bit confusing if you're waiving all fees.
So much you wanna know.
That's all I wanna know, is if you drop your membership for whatever reason.
Insulation and rejoin.
Yeah, are you gonna be charged a fee?
Cause on, uh, uh, Mr. Russ, on, on that top of the second page there, I guess, is the YMCA will not reduce the rates, that's what you're talking about, of existing City of Canton employees who are already YMCA members as of the effective date of this agreement?
They will not reduce.
That's what it says, so that, what you're asking there is, uh, you know, well, normally you would say, okay, well, I'm cool, I won't resign from that, then I won't join that.
Well, yeah, but that, that's...
We gotta, we gotta work all of that like...
I think that would make sense, that would be fair to, to not charge somebody, but reduce the rate, I mean.
Well, yeah.
But no, but I can tell you personally, I, I, but I don't...
Well, yeah, the city, they should reduce the rate back to the board.
I would agree with that, but that's something that has to be clarified.
I don't think that's an issue, I...
But I think, I think that if you're a, a Canton employee, City Canton employee, and you dropped your waived membership, you waived initiation fee, and then a year later or something come back, I think they're gonna try to charge you a fee. All I wanna know is, is clarification, is that happened to me? But I was surprised, because I thought, as a city resident, you didn't pay that, and that's what they do. So, I think you just need to clarify that. And also, just existing membership, that, that's not, that's not, that's diametrically opposed to what we're trying to do here.
Exactly.
Okay. Uh, next item is, is the, uh, discussion of the audio intersection request to allow sidewalk tables and seating. And, uh, Mr. Cummins?
Yes, uh, you know, we did the painted peg, we went through a process, they submitted the design, and now we have audio intersection that has a coffee bar, uh, and will have, they has requested outside tables. There is a attachment eight that shows the diagram, uh, they've been made aware of that if any umbrellas get put in there, they have to meet the safety code relative to fire hazards and so forth. So that'll come up at the next meeting for a motion and a vote.
And this, this plan has all the required space to get...
All the space relative to the ADA is in there and everything.
Okay, Mr. Russ?
I have one question, because the only thing I got in my packet there is just a diagram. Audio intersection, I think sublease is the, the dining section up to somebody else. It's not really an audio intersection home. So are we dealing with the audio intersection or this other sublease, let's see?
Audio intersection is the one that requested it.
I think technically there's somebody else between them.
Not serious.
Well, but, but this, use of the sidewalk is not restricted to any particular function, so audio intersection...
No, no, I understand, it's just, it's just the entity we're, we're signing an agreement, whether it's either that entity or whoever's responsible for the...
They may be providing that as an additional thing to their lease, I'm not sure.
I don't know, I mean, just, there's a technicality, we just have to be aware of that.
But, and we're not signing an agreement, it was just...
No. The ordinance does, uh, what the ordinance, the ordinance doesn't allow it as such, but the ordinance says we can do a variance by decision of mayor and council. And that's, that's, that's basically what we're doing, is we're allowing a variance for these tables to be on the sidewalk. Like, if you make a motion to pass that motion, that's all we're doing, is following the ordinance.
Mr. Cummins?
We, we really need to think about providing for this in the ordinance at this point, as opposed to these variances, because there are other things we want to address, which is collecting trash and things like that, that we want to, uh, the requirements for doing this, as opposed to just come, give us a draw and we'll give you a variance. We need to come up with a better sidewalk use plan.
You wanna work on that?
Yeah.
I can.
I, I agree, I think we need an ordinance there, so that any restor there within the description of that ordinance can put tables there, as long as they have the proper space and so forth, and if we find out they don't, then, you know, I mean, uh, we'll shut down.
I think an ordinance might help us, actually, if we're trying to promote mainstream business and not...
I agree, I totally agree.
If someone comes in and says that we're thinking of an ordinance, and by the way, you can extend your business out into the street, here's the ordinance that protects you.
While we're addressing, um, maybe an ordinance for the sidewalks, I was gonna bring this under council with these items, but this is appropriate. It's the painted peg in the buildings adjacent to, in the line of trash cans that are behind the buildings. And if you're going along there, of course, we painted a mural, which is nice, we're getting ready to pave the street, which is nice. We've done a lot of things to dress up the city, and the whole sidewalks are bad.
Yep.
I talked to, I went over and talked to the painted pig, and I've talked to the city at Mid Cities. The painted pig, I asked him what, what can he do, and he, he recognized the problem, it's gonna get worse with the heat. Uh, the heat will make it stink more. And then, uh, I've met with, uh, Mr. Knight of Waste Management, who's in the audience. But, um, the man at, at painted pig, Joseph, suggested that if we, if he could put a golf cart, have a golf cart, that he would load every night, every day, those cans of those four or five businesses back there. He'd take it to a dumpster that would either be placed somewhere around City Hall or the police station, get rid of those cans that are back there in the back. Mr. Knight says that is, he could put a dumpster there on the street, but it'll take apart. And I, I don't know if that's a good solution. It would require us to make some type of, uh, waiver to allow Joseph or Paint Pig to run his golf cart from the back down to wherever the dumpster would be. But it cleans up those trashies, and that's what I'm saying, is that maybe there should be an ordinance, ordinance of some sort on the trash cans behind those buildings on the sidewalk. It's on the sidewalk.
I think, I think the issue is providing a dumpster. Cause if I recall right, when Waste Management first came in, they really wanted everybody downtown to be part of a dumpster somewhere. Uh, and then, one by one, we got canons, so...
Well, we got the, the ones over here, uh, on Main Street, and they take theirs down to the parking lot. They, uh, the hoagie shop takes it down, and so does, uh, Going Coastal, and they dump every day down here at this camp. And we could do a similar thing up here.
They dump, they dump in, in, uh, the city, on the city property of, uh...
But the, uh, parking lot down there, that's the old group.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So that's where they take theirs, and they do it every, every day. And what we got here is a, a real mess, and we're trying to make it look nicer, and we, we need to address the issue. And I think the gentleman from Paint Pig was, he had a, what I thought was a pretty reasonable idea, but I started thinking about running that golf cart down the street.
Couldn't you do it in a pickup truck or something? I mean...
Sure you could.
I mean, I like to say golf carts legalize to my subject, but, you know...
Uh, we could, uh, I think, I think Mr. Knight said that he could make arrangements for another counter to be placed, uh, somewhere on the city property, either City Hall or the police station. We could remove half those cans, if not all of them. I don't know, you, Mr. Knight, would you care to make a comment about that?
Yes, sir, Mayor Council, we're willing to just, you know, whatever, I know Mr. Cummins and I have had several discussions with him also, so, we're, we're willing to do whatever, you know, we're, we're flexible. I can, uh, bring a couple of managers up here just from a distance standpoint, you know, to make sure we got a good access, but, you know, we're, we, we agree too, we'd like to get them off the street, because it's, it's real bad, so, we're flexible.
And the other thing is that his trucks come in, what, on Thursday, Friday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, yeah. So, uh, the, the trash stays in those cans, you know, from Friday night until...
Wednesday.
Until Wednesday. And in ninety degree, hundred degree temperatures.
Are you gonna sell the same motor if they had a dumpster there? So you'd have that issue anyway, no matter how you do it.
Well, you, you would, but you would be back over here, oh, no, but I mean...
I meant if you put it on a parking spot.
Oh, you're right, yeah.
We, we probably dump it more frequently, we dump it like you do, whatever you dump it, but you still, yeah, you still have the same.
Who, who, uh, who actually, do we pay for that dumpster with that parking lot? Or who pays for it?
That's the tenants.
The tenants, okay.
The one back here, and then there's some behind the buildings too.
I'm not talking about behind this building.
Oh, no, this, this part of your contract is over here.
Yeah, but then, over there's what you, you dump the...
It's vacant park, it's parking lot right there.
Right.
That, that's built as a shared dumpster for the tenants.
Which, what place was it? So, which tenants does that provide for?
Yeah, later on, I'll guess, but Going Coastal, R and M, several of those. Now, I think the office building on the east side there on, and the bread shop here's got his on too, I believe. I'm going from memory here, I apologize for that. The one in the parking lot, the big one here, has, uh, kind of got an enclosure across the police station. That's probably one of the most...
So, in reality, all we need to do is provide a spot for one, and, and they could then clean up North Street there, get those cans, but could, cause we then require, uh, all of them through there, so there wasn't any. I don't know if that's the only one that has cans out or not.
Uh, they, they all got cans and trash, but, uh, the worst, the one that creates the biggest, it's, it's big. And, but they're very willing to cooperate and do what they have to do.
Mr. Russ?
Yeah, and just to confirm, that's their only option right now. They want a dumpster, they want some other option to get the trash off the street. And so, we used to have communal dumpsters, even on East Mary Island Street, there used to be one at Windstream there, and slowly they had some of them, they had gone away, but the other ones are sharing the businesses. Maybe could sit, maybe talk to the county and see if we could get a space out behind the courthouse or something for North Street, that, that those tenants could share, uh, dumpster back there.
You service the courthouse?
Yes, sure, right across, I mean, that's, that's one building.
There's a garbage there.
I think we talked, there's two there, exactly, one of the trash, one of the recycle.
I'm not sure they would, they would cooperate share.
The town, they would just have to let them share, that would...
Yes.
Add food into that, though.
We, we wouldn't really need to add another dumpster, if I did, we'd just add days pickup, you know, we could add, you know, cause I'm sure it's probably not going five days, and we, we could add several days to it, just get it out more frequently.
If we're trying to recruit more restaurants, we, we need...
I agree. So I guess, I guess this is a, a job for our city managers. Figure out what we need to do and give us a plan.
We've been working, I'm just trying to find some ways.
Well, keep working.
I do have a question here.
Yes, sir.
Does Paint Pig now recycle, or they also separate garbage?
I don't think they do. I, I, I'm not sure, I don't believe they do. When I, when I made the visit, it was hard to tell, because some of the carts went in, some were out, but I can find it out.
It almost seems like if they got down to every day, come dumping it, they almost wouldn't have to have some stuff on the sidewalk, because, you know, when they have six garbage cans, they could be inside the back doors and...
They could, they could do the recycling, I'm, I'm sure they generate a lot of cartboard, a lot of, uh, bottles.
We were down at that recycle center, watching the recycling not work that day, and here it was. That's a, that's a pretty, pretty interesting rock, uh, rock ton of size on...
Any, anyone else have a question or comment here? Okay, thank you. Okay. Discussion of waste removal contract options.
No.
Was it that?
F.
F, I skipped one, oh, I'm sorry. Discussion of information technology fee.
Yes, uh, the information technology fee, we're allowed to add a fee to fines for the use of technology. That fee has to be kept, or whatever's collected under that fee, has to be kept separate and used for expenditures related to technology needs in either the police department or municipal court. Uh, we're gonna propose that ordinance at the next meeting to add a information technology fee, because we got these automatic ticket riders now.
That's a, that's a five dollar fee, right?
Five dollar fee.
Yeah.
For, for ticket, regardless of the, the amount of the ticket?
You know, I was just reading it, it allows more than that, but we were just gonna assess a five dollar fee.
But make any sense to have five dollars up to the first hundred and ten dollars after that or something?
I think you get into complexity, you know...
I, I, I'm trying to keep it simple, but it seems like somebody adds a twenty dollar ticket, they pay five dollars, and somebody adds a hundred dollar ticket, pays five dollars, that's a big difference.
But I guess it's like, uh, my response, like having a service call, and you've had a three hundred dollar repair, and, uh, we all get that first basic service call, whether it's a five dollar fix or a five hundred dollar fix, it's a similar situation.
Yeah, I, it was, you think that's the, the best solution, is five dollars?
Now, this, this is just an add-on.
Yeah, I know, I know.
There's, there are, there's a long list of add-ons that are add-on to fines that go to different retirement plans and all these other things, you know, and, uh, this is just, this would be the last one I get at the bottom, as far as, uh, another add-on would be, another five dollars.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, discussion of waste removal contract options.
First, uh, uh, in discussions, our contract hopefully comes up October first. And I've talked with Waste Management, but, uh, because of the amount of money, we probably should be going out with an RFP. We basically looked at two different options. First option is continuation of what we, the current level of service, the way we do it currently, with the city doing the, all of the billing, uh, all of the interface with the customer. The second option, that we would put in this RFP, would go out and allow that the waste collector, whoever does it for us, would actually handle all of the billing related to the customer, and the city would no longer, uh, be a middleman relative to that. The other question, if you go with option two, is do we tack on a franchise fee as you do with other utilities? Uh, and, uh, we should be thinking about that, because, uh, we're gonna go out with the RFP. We don't need to make that decision in the RFP whether we tack on a franchise fee or not, but we will at some point in time, need to decide either between option one or option two when they come back with the, with the results, and then decide at that time whether or not we wanna add a franchise fee to the service.
Definitely.
Things that we should start thinking about, as we consider, uh, the con, the next contract. One of is a direct bill, and, uh, the direct bill is gonna still cause the citizen to call the city. They're not gonna call Waste Management. They'll call the city if they got a problem with their trash. So, it's, it's not gonna cut down on, uh, some of the communications that, uh, that we might think would be a cost reduction. The other thing is that there's a cost increase to, to Waste Management. And the increase comes in that, uh, if the customer decides they're not gonna pay his bill, Waste Management doesn't have much for choice, they could, they'll probably pick up the man's trash. Where if, if the city doesn't pay the city, we have a lot of alternatives in order to encourage him to pay his bill, like cut your water off. So, it, like going to a direct bill can indeed increase, uh, the cost of doing business with the trash, and it can also cause some, uh, difficult relationships with, um, with our... and it can also cause some difficult relationships with, with our citizens because they're getting the, do I call the city, do I call waste management, do I call? We have a good contract. I believe we have an option of a one-year renewal.
That is correct.
So, we got a pretty good deal going. We've got, we've got a gentleman here that it's hard to put a price tag on what this man does. If you got any customers that has a problem, I want to tell you, he's on top of it. I called, Billy over at Mid-City's was calling about the very problem we were just discussing about the cans. I asked Billy, I said, would you call Mr. Knight, Waste Management? Mr. Knight was up there the next day. And Billy was extremely pleased the fact that he got that type of response. I'm not sure, waste management might be the low cost on an RFP, but I'm surely not sure we'd get that type of response that we presently enjoy with waste management, and particularly with Mr. Knight. It's something that we should think about. Waste management's doing a few other things. They're getting ready to introduce, I don't want to steal his thunder, but they're getting ready to introduce something that our city struggles with, about things that we try to get rid of, the homeowner tries to get rid of, that you're not supposed to put paint and certain chemicals into, into the trash. So you've got to go dispose of it some way. And if I, if I may, I would like to ask Mr. Knight to come forward and explain, if you would... Mr. Knight, are you still here?
Yes.
Explain what that program might be to our citizens, as well as to our environment, and why we should continue that to waste management, at least for another year, because we got an excellent contract.
Thank you, sir. We're, we are a whole, we have a wholly owned subsidiary we bought from, it's a California company several years ago, and basically what they do is they pick up household hazardous waste at the door, not at the curb. It's liability issues, put it at the curb. But we've tried to get an office here, or an operation here, and we're in Texas, California, Texas, and this will be the first location in the southeast. And it is our company, but it's totally separate from the trash and from the recycle. Basically, what we do, and there's a small fee, additional fee, but basically, a citizen uses as many times as they want to, they have a special bag, which is part of the cost, they can put paints, pesticides, batteries, electronics, different things like that. There's a whole list of items that normally you're not supposed to put in the trash, go to landfill. And ninety-five percent of this is recycled, so it's not put into the landfill. It's actually taken and properly reused, disposed of like it should be. It's very exciting, it's been received real well in Texas and some of the other cities. I think we have like a hundred and twenty-five cities we're doing it in right now. It's just another feature we're trying to do to keep stuff out of the landfill and also the, you know, to service our customers.
So what I'm kind of, would like the council to think about is that we extend this contract for another year until we can see this new program get started, the fact that they possibly have more to offer the city than just a low price.
Yes, go ahead.
I concur. The only reason I suggest an RFP is because as council in the past has said, for any huge amounts of money that we're going to expend, that we should be looking at, you know, multiple bids or putting it out to a bid process. There is absolutely no question in the level of service that we've been receiving from waste management and the ease of working with them. There's none of my... So I could go either way. I could say, let's extend it another year from one person.
Sir, it's actually two years.
It's two years. It's one year guaranteed at the current rate.
You're actually protected by the state law that protects you. You can end any contract with thirty days at the end. You can't buy it in future, council, so it's a two-year extension.
Let me ask a question. City of Woodstock is, actually, as I understand, y'all handle garbage for the city of Woodstock, and y'all do billing directly?
Yes.
What is the rate for pickup there for an average household?
They pay nine forty.
Nine forty?
They have several, you have several things that they do not have, and this kind of changes...
Like what would we have?
They've got the, you've got the recycle bank option, which is, which is an additional fee. Regardless of how many people use it, it's still an additional fee. Also, they average about fifty, it's below sixty, backdoor customers. Your contract's written a little different, where if anyone's sixty-five and over, they don't have to be handicapped or disabled, they can use the backdoor service, and I think the last month's billing will be a little over fifteen hundred backdoor services.
We don't have that many, do we? Fifteen hundred, oh, okay, that wouldn't, that wouldn't just be homeowners, though, would it?
Yes, sir, that's homeowners, households.
We've only got fifteen hundred senior citizen exemptions, and I know I don't get backdoor pickups.
Well, you have to ask for it. You don't, you don't have to...
So you're saying there's fifteen hundred that would be eligible?
No, sir, we actually pick up fifteen hundred backdoor stops.
How many, how many on the council get their backdoor garbage picked up? And I think most of you are eligible.
But that, so that's certainly just like, that was, you know, from a house standpoint, we actually have a transfer station in the city of Woodstock, that means...
So they're, they're right now with, you know, they're at nine dollars and whatever it is, and we're at sixteen fifty?
Well, we bill you ten fifty.
Oh, okay, yeah, ten fifty, okay.
Yes, ten, ten...
And we charge our residents sixteen fifty?
Ten, seniors are a little, little ten thirty-five.
Mr. Rush?
We have three things. First of all, when we met at Rock Ten, you said there was fourteen hundred and eighty-eight people at backdoor pickup. Does it grow that much?
The new employees came out yesterday, and it's got fifteen oh five on it.
Yeah, we talked about...
I'm sure it fluctuates.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, I remembered that number though. Second thing is, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't there a way to dispose of paint legally? You can actually open up the can, put some paper in there, let it be absorbed, dry out, and then you control it in the garbage?
That's right, sure.
Third thing is, the RFP, we are not, as a council, obligated, I don't think, to accept as our contract the lowest bidder. There are other considerations that we might allow us to go with the second lowest or whatever, that certainly we, I think it's important that we do that process, but I think we're not obligated if it comes back, some garbage company we've never heard of, we don't want to necessarily go with them.
That's right.
In a way, I concur, but I also look at it, we've got pretty good service now. I sort of agree with Mr. Huffman, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
I would agree.
Well, as you know, let's back up a minute here, and let's talk about the last time we did. I mean, that was, you know, there were those that did not want to do that. And we ended up saving about seventy thousand dollars on an annual basis. So, I mean, that, that's just the only point that I would make. And I agree, your service is, you know, I don't know anybody who has any problem with service at all. I mean, that's, I haven't, you know, certainly had any problem with it. Of course, I'm going to start getting backdoor pickup. My driveway is too steep.
Yours is worse than mine.
But anyway.
You ought to, yes.
I probably ought to get that.
Well, we raise your rate.
Just for granted.
Would you mind repeating what Canton charges over there?
Sixteen fifty, I believe it is.
Sixteen fifty. And what does Canton charge seniors for trash pickup?
Ten fifty, which is what we're being charged by, by waste management.
Seniors pay ten thirty-five.
Oh, ten thirty-five.
We charge you ten thirty-five, and then normal service, ten fifty. It's forty-eight twenty-two curbside, and there's fifteen oh five there, backdoor, as of last month, last month.
Is there an extra charge for backdoor?
No, wait.
But it does cost you, backdoor does cost you.
Sure.
It's closing down.
We actually have two additional guys on the truck because of that, just to try to service the city within that amount of timeframe.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I just, one statement that Mr. Knight and I will be working further through this as we go along with some coming up.
All right, the next item, discussion of service fee for water sanitation credit card payments.
It's sort of stated wrong on the agenda, it's just that I wanted to bring out some information about credit cards. We incur about thirty-six thousand dollars a year in costs taking credit cards. There are a lot of options. Some other utility-based organizations do not even accept credit cards. Yesterday, I believe, we had twenty-seven telephone calls where you're actually taking a credit card information that ties time up, and it does cost the city. So we need to look at, do we want to continue the service level? Do we want to continue to take credit cards? Do we want to continue to take them only via electronic methods? Or do we want to continue to do it by telephone? What options do we want to consider? But I was just bringing this information forward so that you were aware of what costs the city does incur to do this currently.
Let me ask a question. Do you think it actually does take more time dealing with credit cards than it does a customer one at a time at the window? I would have thought it'd be quicker and a little more convenient. I would think we'd rather have more of them than by the phone or credit cards than having people lined up or dealing with them at a window.
Well, again, that's a comparison if you didn't take it by the phone with a mail a check in instead. We're assuming that if they didn't, or the assumption that I get from your question is that, we're making the assumption that if we didn't take it on the phone, they'd come into the window, they might mail a check instead, and I would think processing a check is a lot more efficient than spending ten minutes on a phone tag and credit card payment. So, I mean, these are all things you have to look at. There is a cost of doing that business, and I think that's the purpose of me adding it to the agenda, is to highlight that cost, and to have everybody here give some thought as to what services do we want to treat this, just, well, let's continue doing what we're doing. That's the cost of doing business, you know, whatever.
I personally would think we would like, I'd like to encourage credit card payments, actually. And I think if we start adding on a dollar, two dollars, or whatever it is, that might discourage, I'm not sure.
Is that, is that the only method of payment that could cost us in a quantifiable method, way? Meaning, I know you can't quantify dollar-wise what it costs to have a person sitting at the window, but direct pay does not cost the city anything?
Yes.
It does, it does.
It doesn't cost the city any, I'm sorry, I'm answering that question correctly. It costs the customer. If you go online and pay, there's a dollar and a quarter charge to your credit card for using your...
But how about if you just pay direct from your bank?
Uh, no.
Okay, that's what I thought.
No, but that's...
That's what we want to encourage.
Direct from your bank is treated as if you mailed a check or sent a check.
Well, yeah, but there's a big difference cost-wise. Somebody's got to tear open the envelope, process the check.
It's still processing a check.
Yeah, but direct pay is straight line, right to the bottom line.
It doesn't, we don't have the mechanics to do that.
Well, I, that's the way I pay.
Yeah, but you actually, if I may continue, the bank actually writes a check for you. It's still a check process.
Okay, okay. It isn't, it isn't electronic transfer?
We are not, and I don't know where that lies, whether that lies with us or lies with the bank, but it's on the list to look at. That's why it isn't a...
Would it be difficult, Glenn, would it be difficult to kind of give us what we're paying, what it's costing us now, and what the choices might be?
Well...
Is that too difficult?
What do you mean in terms of which cost?
All of them. I mean, so we can try to figure out where we want to encourage people to move? You know, what's the fee that we are being charged by the credit card company for the processing of the payment?
I don't know the percentage of it.
Two and a half percent, three percent?
Probably varies in credit card.
I don't know, maybe Nate can answer that.
It varies with type of credit card, type of bank it is, credit card.
So it varies by credit card problem too?
I think American Express might be the most expensive, yeah.
But the other thing that happens is, is with the direct, where you go online and you actually, online bill pay is actually processed by our software vendor, and they add a fee to your credit card, and they collect it. So they've got a real good business going, is to, they would encourage everything to be done online because they charge a dollar and a quarter to that credit card.
But we, if I have a direct pay from my bank, that's the cleanest way for both sides, me and the city of Canton.
Probably is.
Is that the most efficient of all ways to pay?
I would say the direct pay where you're initiating is coming in as a check, and it's probably the same as processing other checks.
Maybe if we could have some comparisons, we could try to figure out what we want to do. Does charging a small fee for a credit card payment might make some kind of...
Well, I don't know if that's the answer. There's another thing that we could consider looking into, especially when we get a fire station up in the north part of the city, we could actually have what is called Jack, and Jack will take credit cards and take all sorts of things, or there's like a machine that you can use to pay your utility bills. So that's another thing that we're going to look into is to doing it, in terms of more efficient processing, that those people won't have to come here if they like paying it in person, they might go and pay it to a machine.
Okay. What else we got? Next out?
That's just, city manager's report.
Well, no, the next one is the information RFP for bond council.
You added a...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. The bond council RFP, we're going to be sending out an RFP for bond council. If you know of prior meeting, we talked about, and we voted on Davenport Financial Services to be our financial representatives. Well, depending upon how we look at the, specifically, the two thousand and nine bond, which is callable in September, we need what is called a bond council, which creates the documents. We don't know at this time whether it'll be included with two thousand and five bonds or not. So the method of going out either for private placement or public, public placement of refinancing requires a bond council. And what this will do is send out an RFP to several bond attorneys or councils, and they will submit back their costs for each of the two options, either public or private placement to handle this. There is no cost to us unless we utilize them, i.e. move forward with refinancing. Then there is a cost, but you do have to have a bond council to make those documents or create those documents. I can probably explain it better than I can.
Are they actually going to come back with comparisons, dollar-cost comparisons?
Yes.
That will vary.
Sure.
Some will be higher, lower, whatever, and then they'll have a fee attached to it, and we'll be...
A fee attached to it, and we can select one.
But we've got to decide on one of them.
We have to decide on one of them.
Okay. Okay, you have, you have anything else, Mr. Cumming?
Yes, just a couple little things. We had a citizen recognition, we recognized Mr. Scott Watson, Watson, for his identification of a vehicle being driven by a suspect who was involved in a shooting. Recognition by the police department. The city of Canton Fire Department got us a certificate of appreciation from the Cherokee County School District for their participation in community-based vocational instruction programs. And the other, the last thing is, the good news on our insurance renewal. We had budgeted eight percent, and our actual increase will be around four percent. So it'll be about twelve thousand dollars annually less than we've budgeted. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. On the mayor's report, as you noted tonight, Deborah Fincher was here, and her potential reappointment is up for, beginning July one, I believe. So I would be recommending that we approve Deborah Fincher as to continue on the Latin Board of Trustees, and we'll be voting on... and we'll be voting on May fifteenth. Also, Stan Rogers had stepped down from the zoning board of appeals or the variance board, and I have talked to Stan, I talked to Stan and asked him, did he have any recommendations? And his suggestion was, no, that he didn't have a recommendation, but he did think that we ought to have somebody on there that was familiar with building and perhaps development of a particular building and so forth. And I have spoken with Glenn Elias, who is a gentleman who lives here on East Main, and he's been, he's willing to accept that. So it will be my intention to nominate him at the next, next meeting, for November fifteenth. Only other thing is, I would like to make sure that on our next agenda, we bring, we need to continue discussion on our private, particularly the four private streets in Great Sky. We don't need to let that completely, we need to make a decision because it's just been hanging. I know Mr. Cumming's tried to make a decision not long ago, but we definitely need to make a decision, whatever it is, and give it our best shot. So we'd like for that to be on the agenda. At this point, I entertain a motion to go to executive session to discuss land acquisition and litigation. Let me ask, on the litigation, will we be coming back out?
We need to approve that tonight.
Okay, so we will be coming back out to approve a, basically, it's a settlement or a release?
Settlement and release.
Settlement and release of a suit. We have a motion in a second. Ladies and gentlemen, aye?
Aye.